I'm not on. Okay, here we are. Thank you. We are back. We had our next up, we had an action item on safety and security, but there is no action at this time. So we will move on to our monthly reports. Um, we're still, it's still, it's an ongoing discussion and there's no, yeah. Well, we're gonna have, we have to limit what we say at this time. So, so we are. Yeah. Yeah, yes, absolutely. We went to executive session with the chief of police and the conversations are ongoing and we hope to have something that will bring back very quickly and we'll take action on as a board then, but not this evening. Thank you. So with that, we're going to go into monthly reports. Dr. Jones.
Thank you. First of all, starting the year, I just, I can't express how great it feels to be out in the schools and see such a high level of energy and just the, the great work that's going on. Just as a reminder, one of the fun things that we're rolling out this year is foundations for third grade. And that's just been great to see because those third graders had foundations in kindergarten for second. And when I was out in one of the buildings, the principal was saying it's the teacher's learning curve because it's their first time, but the children are able to really help them just with the whole process because this is their fourth year. We also have our new sixth, seventh and eighth grade ELA and social studies curriculum. And I was out in actually Central this morning and that's also great to see rolling out and we'll continue, of course, to have lots of collaboration with teachers on that. I would say the two challenges, there are two that right now I think are front and center in our mind. I'm going to talk about transportation first. We do have a brand new company this year. Last year was the end of our contract. We had to go back out to bid. When we went out to bid, we ended up selecting this company. They worked through the summer, had the route scheduled, had the right amount of drivers. During the summer, we didn't find out till Richmond School was literally starting. There, they were apparently bought and sold by another bus company. So they have experienced some challenges where drivers are jumping from one company to the other. There's such a driver shortage in Connecticut. So that definitely has impacted them. There are other issues as well. We meet on it every single day and Dr. Kara below was in a call again, in the meeting again today, basically with their CEO. What I can say is, you know, of course we're apologetic. You can only apologize so many times for buses not picking students up. So we fully understand why parents are upset about that. We've got it isolated down now to pretty much a few buses. It's mainly at the high school. We're working on an alternate solution and we're doing that by also working on the flexibilities of the contract and a performance aspect of the contract with our town legal. And how we can utilize perhaps other resources to make sure that not only can we run our school buses, but also things like athletics. We're currently using a different provider for athletics, but again, it's definitely been a challenge. So I, I will say that about transportation, but we're almost there. We have a few, we have another solution that we're putting in place right now, which we hope is going to help. The last item would be with cost Cobb. And I said this in the note that I sent to cost Cobb families, letting them know that we were putting in basically an acting position for their assistant principal because the parents had really asked about that. And that's Karen Vitti. And in that same notification, I let them know that we are currently going through the internal investigation. And we also have been notified by the attorney general, by their office, and that they are starting an inquiry as well as the town is also narrowing down, I believe, their finalists for who they want to do a town investigation. But I, I'm not going to be able to give answers quickly. Whenever you are in an investigation such as this, the legal precedence has to, has to take place. And there are people do have due process rights and it can take weeks and sometimes months. So that's what we've shared with the cost club community. On the internal, it is Dr. Bud who manages that. We don't actually have any participation in that. The HR department is, is managing that aspect.
Um, I'd like to add to that just because I haven't, I was lucky enough to join something called the special operations committee yesterday, which was something that Fred Camillo and Ben Branyan have started. It's actually pretty interesting. It's a public meeting, although it was really just us. But um, from there we, and they actually brought together like Dan Oz's mayor, myself, Alexis Vulgaris and Margarita Albin from P N Z. Anyway, in that Fred did provide me an update. And that is that they're very close. And then Barbara Schellenberg, who also is the town attorney, provided me the same, that the town is very close to hiring an independent investigator. They of course themselves have to use outside counsel. So they are doing that. It is a costly process. So they are figuring that out right now. And I think they're hopeful to announce that in the next couple of days. And like I said, they are, I think they're figuring out the scope and all that, but they are expecting to announce that in the next couple of days. And then of course we'll cooperate with them and their efforts quite like we're doing the attorney general and the Connecticut State Department of Education. But that is kind of where that stands and hopefully while you're a day or two.
They will. Did they? There we go. Did the first election, they talk a lot about the scope of the investigation, what, what, what they would be looking at the.
He did not share that with me now. I imagine we'll learn that after they have picked their outside counsel.
I was just wondering that the, what about as far as with the, the state investigations? Have they been, Tony, have they been in contact with us?
And that is the attorney general's office. They reached out just basically to open the inquiry, had an in-person meeting, several hours long. We are expecting that they will issue a subpoena, could be any time, to tell us exactly which documents they want us to preserve and provide to them.
Actually sticking on that same subject, I also think the Department of Education had announced something as well. Is that being, have they been in contact and what's the status of that?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that. Jonathan, Dr. Bud could be, but I'm not aware of anything right now. We just have his internal investigation. We had the attorney general investigation. And then the town of Greenwich, who's trying to hire the independent investigator.
And what is Dr. Bud's investigation covering?
Yeah, I'm not at liberty to talk about the investigation right now. All I can say is that he is investigating and he's coming to it from a human resources aspect, from the employee standpoint. So he's, he's literally in the middle of that right now.
Okay, so if I can just switch to a different topic. You had mentioned that the ELA, the new ELA curriculum for sixth, seventh and eighth grade was rolling out. And I was curious as to how we're defining curriculum because my understanding is that curriculum needs to come to the board for approval pursuant to policy sixty-one, sixty-one, I believe. And the question is, that didn't come to the board. So the question is, what is the curriculum that's being rolled out because the board hadn't proved it?
Yeah, it's, and that's my fault. It's not really curriculum. Our curriculum are the standards. They're actually called lesson plans. And I was looking at actually the history today. And it's how you take those standards and making sure that all of the teachers have resources, materials available to them that are issued by the district, not where they're just looking at the standards and they have to go out and find their own materials. But it's, it's basically a lesson plan concept, which I know the curriculum team talked about last year and it went through the curriculum committee as well.
Ms. Downey.
Do you want to start? Tell me when committee reports.
I'm ready. Oh, do you have another question?
Well, I had a question on another topic. And I know we're going to be getting it up for Dr. Jones. I know we're going to be getting an update on Westerns Fields and Central Middle School. But I'm hoping that you might be able to give us a little bit of an update of what's going on at the high school with their fields because we've lost a lot of parking spots. We have a lot of very frustrated and upset individuals over that and they keep in, seems to be encroaching further and further and they've looked like they're not as far ahead as I had thought we would be at this point. So I was wondering if you had an update.
And they are actually right on schedule. And I know it's hard. It's been really hard for Greenwich High School because I believe at the P T A meeting, we said it was about a hundred spots that they've lost right now. That will, once they're able to move that all offsite and get the fields rebuilt, you know, they, they will move those vehicles and they'll get that space back. But it, it could be the spring before we see that. But that's better than going another entire summer and having to close everything down on the campus again. So they're working as quickly as they can. It's a huge project at the high school.
And just so we're clear, we're gonna, you think we're going to be done and have that field, those fields back, at least in service by next year at least? I know we got these, these fields back partially in the middle of the spring season last year, but the other, you know, just was wondering.
Yes, we should have them back next year for sure.
And might I make an additional request that, or note that we might need to add some signage at the Cardinal Stadium. The signs that said no dogs on campus, et cetera, seem to not be there. And I watched numerous dogs using our fields as a laboratory the other day, not on the fields, but you know, back behind. So, thank you.
Okay, committee reports? Go ahead, Ms. Downey.
I'm just reporting on the G H S entryway, which we, the committee has met. We've gone back to the architect. He's given us a fee structure to move forward with revised plans. And at this point, we are going to get a presentation the first week of October with a couple of possible renderings, drawings. And Joe, I know you like a rendering. Maybe you'll want to come for some suggested alternatives to the project to keep it within the budget from a design basis. And then the committee will make a decision. And we'll see what needs, it'll obviously will have to come back to us because we have design approval.
Joe.
I briefly spoke of a virtual net metering. So I wanted to prepare everybody for, we're going to start getting closer to that. What it is is we're partnering up or considering partnering up with a, a solar development company where they're going to take, it's a government subsidized project that we're entitled to some subsidies. The subsidies are directed to this company that will be building a solar array, a solar system somewhere upstate Connecticut. They have some deals with some farmlands they're working with. What we have to be prepared to do, the legal side is looking at this right now, but we have to be prepared to do is make a twenty-year commitment to ever source. What we'll be doing is right now, we get all our electricity from ever source. If we make this twenty-year commitment with no financial commitment to the solar development company, we will be reimbursed up to twenty to twenty-five percent of our annual electricity costs for the next twenty years. Those numbers are quite big. And where Abby's looking at the, the documentation now, we've had several meetings with the, the solar development company. It's a real project. We had met with some, some state official, state government officials to verify that it is a very legitimate opportunity for us to offset our, our footprint, our, our consumption of electricity by that same amount created by a renewable source. So it's a kind of a cool project and also saves us up to twenty to twenty-five percent. So the only commitment we have is we have to be prepared to, to make a twenty-year commitment to ever source. So we have to do a little research on that. That's the only commitment we have to that. Also, a second project is, which we talked briefly about before, is the, the broadcast room in the stadium, the extra press box. Sean Mayo, Ralph's son, is running that project for us. He's looking at the equipment. Jamie Andrea and the family are donating some, a pretty good sum of money for him to, to have this equipment for a classroom, a broadcast classroom at the stadium. So they're narrowing down the list of things they want. We have to discuss the donation. We, hopefully we could put it on the gen, the agenda. We'll talk about it later because Sean would like to talk about it briefly. And Jamie, also in honor of her, her, her husband who passed. So, so that's, that's what I got. Thanks.
Laura, while I'm looking at you, you want to do central middle school?
Sure. So I can tell you that we put out requests for proposals for an owner's rep and for an architect. We got eight proposals back, which were opened today. There will, there will be interviews for the committee to participate in on October fourth. On October twenty-ninth, we anticipate opening the bids that we were hopefully going to get back from the architects. There was a very robust response to our R F P and we had, I want to say over twenty people do a walk through here a week or so ago. Our building committee media meeting on nine twenty-seven will be an executive session. Will be you know, discussing scoring and our scoring individually of the, of the individual responses for an owner's rep. So that's where we are and hopefully we'll just keep moving ahead at a full speed ahead for us, I guess.
Yeah, Karen.
I had a question about one of the committees that had spoken. The D E and I committee. How did that come about and who's on it and what is their role and function?
It's a P TAC committee.
It's a P TAC. It has nothing to do with us. It's the P TAC.
Some P T A council, their committee.
Okay, so they, it has nothing to do with the Board of Ed?
Zero. Okay, go ahead.
I was going to give an update on C I C and while I was unable to attend their first meeting of the year, Michael Joseph did. So at least one of us was, was able to be there. They basically just sort of went over things that were happening for the year as well as revising some of their bylaws for a few things. But they wanted to ensure that we all were aware that they're looking for people who are interested in becoming members. They are very open, transparent. Information is certainly out there. They have space for three parents, two educators and one related service provider. Some of those would be voting members and some would be alternates. But they really wanted to ensure that parents and other members of our educational community here. But they really wanted to ensure that parents and other members of our educational community here that wanted to be involved know that they are open and looking. And all of their meetings are, you know, open for attendance, even if you are not you know, a, you know, a voting member or an alternate. They also voted in new, two new working committees. They do not have names for them, but they are looking into behavior management strategies. And looking into the consistency of services and service delivery and case management across schools for consistency. And they are sort of looking also to figure out the best ways that they can help to support the mental health of all of our students overall, as there is definitely a need, an increased need this year, and they are more than aware of that. But their next meeting will be in November. They are going to have some parent forums and other things. I know Dr. Stacy will be sharing some of those with us when she gives her update as well. So that's it from CAC.
Cody?
I have my Greenwich, Greenwich Alliance board update. Three updates. They awarded seventy-five thousand dollars in scholarships to thirty-eight avid graduates in college. That brings total scholarship awards to seven hundred thirty-four thousand. Update number two. The VRAR STEAM camp at Western taught by Guspar, thank you. Lapari was a huge success. This camp built upon the equipment and software investment made by the Alliance, which was a hundred fifteen thousand dollars. It expanded the reach to students outside of Western. And then third, reaching out grant spending for twenty-two, twenty-three was significant over the summer, and it included equipment purchases for COSCOB and Western sensory rooms, the HAMAV outdoor classroom, Old Greenwich School Way, and the Old Greenwich School Wave Broadcast Station.
Great. Also, Barbara O'Neil, who just sent me an email, I was reminded of the fact that she's on the Old Greenwich Building Committee. And she would like the public to know that we need one more person that has construction experience. So if any of the people listening online would like to apply for that job, that would be fantastic. Can you do that through the Selectmen's Office?
And construction means not constructing with Legos, correct?
Just checking. You could do whatever you'd like.
Just checking.
Who is the board representative on the Old Greenwich Building Committee?
Not chosen yet. We had to do that. I have to do that. And JC. Yeah. So, but they, the building committee reps, the select, the ones that the Selectmen chose, right? For OG and JC were approved on Monday night at the RTM meeting. Okay, so with that, why don't we start our meeting? We are now going to our first discussion item. Summer School Executive Summary, which I know we all listened to the video. So Dr. Caravillo, do you want to just come up here and we can shoot some questions at you?
Thank you. Yes, questions?
No hands? Karen?
On, I don't know what page it's on, but it talks about math achievement for GPS versus Julian Curtis. It talks about a twenty-two percent growth rate versus a forty-five percent growth rate. How are you measuring the, the growth rates between those two different situations? And I assume you mean the Julian Curtis Summer School Program that's run exclusively through there versus all of Greenwich Public Schools that's run separately?
That's correct. So what we have found is that, and we found this last year as well. Those students that went to their own school with their own teachers and, and attended at least eighty percent of the time did much better, had much better performance than those students that went to the GPS Summer School because they did not have their own teacher. So what we found is that if we could have the luxury of doing Summer School at each school with their own teachers, then I think we could really make some positive differences. But we can't require the teachers to teach in their own school with their own kids in the summertime. But that's something that maybe we can keep increasing every year.
Yeah, but my point goes, what are you looking at to measure the growth? Like, what, what, what tools are you using that distinguishes between the growth of the kids that went to Summer School versus, and I assume it's just the kids that went to Summer School as opposed to a broader community?
Yeah, it's just the kids in Summer School. Michael Reed gave us some assessments to use from Big Ideas, and that's what we used as a pre-test and a post-test.
And you're testing them at the beginning of when they enter Summer School versus when they exit Summer School?
Correct.
Ms. Downey?
Thanks, yeah, thanks, Anne. Okay. So to, two, two points. The one about Julian Curtis. So are you already in the planning for next summer in terms of thinking about how you, like, what's the timeline and the process for planning for next year? Because if you found that this model was so successful, are you already kind of trying to put, see what wheels we put in motion? Is it too soon? Or what should we be anticipating? And I have a follow-up question, which is unrelated.
So it's really a little too soon. We usually start in January. We have to find out what buildings are available first. And that has a big impact on how many students we can have, where we can have it. And then we would have to ask which administrators would be willing to be their site supervisor and which teachers would be willing to work in their own schools with their own children. So it's a little early yet, but we have been thinking about that. And if we could do it, it would be great. But, you know, we have a lot of construction and repairs in our buildings during the summer.
But was our capacity higher? By doing it this way, having kind of the campus and then the Julian Curtis special, did we increase our capacity? Or what, or did we just have a smaller capacity somewhere else?
Smaller capacity. We had fewer students this year.
We had fewer students, okay. And then just about the tutoring, just a question which you said was very well received, if we, if done early. How did we do that on a cost base? Did we charge for it? How did we?
We do not charge for any ESY students or any students that we invite to attend Summer School because they are our lowest performing students.
Okay.
The only ones who are charged are, are students who take accelerated student classes or secondary students.
So, for example, we would have invited a student to come and he or she would say, you know what, I don't really want to come, but I'll do the tutoring. As kind of a lesser option in terms of time commitment, based on whatever's going on.
And that was a fabulous idea from Dr. Jones.
Yeah, so it worked out great. So can we expand capacity for that next summer? I mean,
Again, it depends on the space. And it depends on how many literacy specialists that we can have, because that was our focus this year for primary grades.
Because it looked like, I mean, particularly in K and one on literacy, that was massively successful, just at least based on the test results. Thank you.
So.
Yeah, yeah.
So that was, I had a similar question about tutoring. First of all, I'm thrilled that we're doing it because obviously the numbers align here. It was working. It wasn't clear to me. Thirty-three is that, if that was the capacity in the program, or if we were limited by the capacity in the program, or were we limited by families interested in attending?
Families interested in coming.
That's what I, so what was the, what kind of capacity did we have this summer?
Well, we had, we had it from eight o'clock until ten o'clock, and we didn't have many students coming at the nine to ten hour. So we would change that this year, next year to eight, nine.
Oh, that, I, I, I was, that makes sense because that, that matches on the the general Summer School attendance. You know, you see attendance number sixty-five percent, seventy-five percent, and clearly, students are who are in the Summer School more were more successful. It made me wonder what we're doing, or if we need to do more, or how we can think differently about communicating the importance of Summer School and the importance of attendance and all these things.
We, we do really stress that we need to have our students there every day. But sometimes, children don't, they want to just go play. And sometimes, parents just want their children to have a different experience during the summer. We do have many parents that do have their children go to camps because it's very important, especially with COVID, they want their children to be able to play, to socialize again. So it's really parental choice. We can't force them to come, but we highly encourage them to participate.
Of course. I guess I just wonder if there's more, and maybe there isn't, but if there's more we can do as far as sharing this data when we're having those personal conversations with families.
It's a good idea. We will keep that in our, our thoughts for January.
Yeah, go ahead, Karen.
So no, I had sent a whole bunch of questions, so I'm just going to add it.
Yeah, you did.
Sorry. In advance, well, that's what we're supposed to do.
Absolutely, and I appreciated it.
Yeah, so I know that, you know, I had asked how many, you know, our students were offered the tutoring option. I know you'd said, you know, it was offered for grades K four. It was invited, it was offered to all of the student, all of the students that were invited, but thirty-three ended up attending. And much like Michael Joseph here, I was going to say the same thing. I know we're adding another parent-teacher conference. And I think maybe that would be a nice opportunity for students who are lagging a little bit behind to have an opportunity to, to talk about this option. As you said, there are a lot of students who, parents who don't want their students in school all day, every day, all through the summer. They want to be able to have the opportunity to do other things, but this tutoring option may not have been as well-known and could be a really wonderful option. And I think one-on-one attention sometimes really is, it will help in other things, but for our strategic plan, which we'll be talking about later, making that connection with a student, a parent, an adult in the building, you know, and connecting with families as well. So.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
I was just going to make that suggestion. And the other question I had was, I know we talked about JC and the homeschool being important. I know I'd asked you since it was so successful in seeing growth in those students that were able to attend their homeschool, if we had considered it, at least for some of the other schools that are lagging a little bit behind in their achievement data and scores, which I get, we'll be talking about in another week or two. Or some of our other Title One schools. I know Western at one point had looked to do it as well. I think they were a home site anyway this year.
They did, they did it for their own students last year. But this year, they did not have the same, the same volunteerism for teachers to do Summer School from Western. Besides which, we took the building over, so they couldn't have done it anyway. Actually, they probably could have, but this, it would have been very hard for the custodians with the work that was being done there, as well as having the room so that they could clean.
Well, again, that leads us back to tutoring. And hopefully, students, you know, we can talk to them about that because maybe they would have the option. It's their teachers who would maybe would be interested in tutoring. If they couldn't get into their own buildings, could work with some of their additional students and would make some nice connections and see some more growth there.
Thank you.
Just a thought.
Great. It's a great idea. Thank you.
Yeah, Karen?
I just have two more questions. One, was there similar data for seeing anything with respect to the English growth level? Because there's, there's literacy components, and then there's a math component for Summer School. So was there similar data for, on the literacy side?
So what we did is, we used the Early Literacy Star Assessment for our K-two students, and then we used the Regular Star Reading Assessment. We did a pre and a post.
So did you see similar growth between?
Between JC. JC had higher growth than our regular general Summer School Program.
Sorry, I just didn't understand the slide. And then the other question I had was respective of tutoring. What was, what is the ratio between tutor and student for that period of time?
It was a three to one.
Any other questions on this topic? Okay, Karen?
Wasn't a question, was a comment. I know that the board for years has talked about ways to improve Summer School, not having students that attend for things that they don't need to be there for and dividing things up. So I just want to say just the numbers that we're seeing here and having the opportunity to have kids come in to be tutored, all the different opportunities that they're being offered. Thank you for kind of taking that look and reimagining, in some ways, our Summer School Program. I know Michael Joseph mentioned that there's maybe some other great ways to do that, too. And I look forward to having that discussion, but I just wanted to thank you for, for that. Could be asked for so long.
Well, it's, it's a team effort, so I appreciate the administration working with us very closely.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Caravillo. Next up, twenty-twenty-two climate survey. Dr. Jones, I know Jen is here now, but I told her she doesn't really have to walk through it. Can you come down so we can? Can you come down so we can answer, ask questions? Thank you. No. I mean, I don't need her to walk it, walk me through it. Are you guys okay if we just go right into questions? That's fine. Okay. Yeah. Go ahead, Cody. Do you have a question? No, you like that style. Okay. All right. Yep. Michael Joseph? Go ahead.
I had one question about the, the risk assessment at the end, the, but just, just a comment. I know there were some comments tonight about these, the success of this data and excitement of this data. I, I think we have to acknowledge that there's, there's a lot of growth here. And there's a lot of numbers here that aren't, aren't that great. None of us really should be happy about numbers in the, in the fifty percent range of when students are saying about the value of school and student belonging. Obviously, we're going to see the strategic plan in the moment, and that's certainly something that we're going to address. But I don't think we want to give the message tonight that, oh, we all just have to pat ourselves on the back and say, great job. There's a lot of, it's a lot of growth here. They, no one, we can't be happy with, with that fifty-eight percent of our students say that school is interesting, important, and useful. They, so I think, I think we just have to acknowledge that. That said, the, I was, I was hoping you could explain the, the at-risk stats at the back, because I was at the back, because I wasn't, I wasn't quite clear on the last page, you know, page nine. I wasn't quite clear what we were looking at.
These statistics are generated from our Aspen SIS, which is what I, I manage. And they are the aggregate of specific instances that are reported by the individual schools. As, and you can see that there is a, a significant drop in this most recent year. As to, I think there was a sub-question, which was the difference between the high, medium, and low risk. And I actually would defer to Stacy to give you more detail on that.
So the, oh.
Wait. So, sorry, but actually, I'm not sorry. What are you talking about? What is a risk incident? That's, I think that's a fundamental from the very beginning. It's like, I'm looking at this angle. We had fewer risk number of incidents, not students and risk incidents. What is that?
So when a school has a concern about a child's mental health or safety, they conduct a risk assessment that's done by one of our mental health practitioners. So the social worker or the school psychologist. So when they complete that, it goes into Aspen. So we're able to track by the number of incidents that have occurred. And so this has been practiced for the last several years. So we're able to look at not only last year's data, but some historical data from the years before. And we're able to see how many of those incidences have been needed. And so our staff is really good about tracking that. And they're able to follow up. They put what the incident was, which then classifies how it's, how it's ranked. And then what the follow-up to that is, so that we can keep a record to make sure that we're following up with the student.
Yeah, go ahead, Dr. Jones.
So this was one of the questions, actually, that Karen Hirsch also submitted. And I think it's just helpful for the board to know that if you look at Regulation five-one-four-one point five R, that's the regulation that goes along with the policy, of course, that the, the policy committee put together. And you can see the forms, you can see the detailed process, and that was all updated, I believe, Stacy, at the beginning of last year. That was one of the first that she probably worked on. But you, it gives you a good idea of the, the detail that the staff actually put into these risk assessments and how serious, seriously they take them.
Karen?
Yeah, I sent a whole bunch of these questions in, too. And much like Michael Joseph, I was going to say, you know, some of these numbers were, I wasn't doing a tap dance at home, reading them. I was a little disappointed. And I, I know that a lot of this is leading us directly into our agenda item later, which is strategic plan and ways to ensure our students feel school's value and, and the sense of belonging and our teacher satisfaction rates, because that is particularly concerning to me. These are the individuals that are walking to the doors every day to make sure that our students are happy and feel confident and feel that they belong in their schools. So I'm looking forward to hearing a little bit more how we're going to. So I'm looking forward to hearing a little bit more how we're gonna bring that level up. But I think one of the things that's missing from this, and I, you could see from the questions that I asked from somebody who has a marketing background, is we, we, we talked about how many people responded, but we didn't say how many that was sent out to, what percentage of students responded. I knew each school beginning individual reports. I kind of look forward to seeing that, but I didn't have as much time to sort of dig into this, but the responses, because we got them a little bit before, but I, I think it's sort of important to note that elementary school students will not respond the same way to their, how they feel the importance of school is to the way high schoolers are, and if we have, I mean, I was looking at your answers to me, that only forty-seven percent of our high schoolers responded to some of these surveys. I, I think it's really important, not just the data that we're getting back, but trying to see if we can ask students, maybe it's the way we're asking it. I, I don't know, but it's so important for us to really, we're seeing more incidence of things. We're talking about risk assessment. While that may be going down, it's just there's more students that we may be missing. We need to make sure that they feel a sense of belonging. We need to find a way to, to, to capture that information from them and make sure that they're feeling comfortable and confident. I mean, all the incredible work, I see heads nodding back there. Incredible work that's being done for our curriculum. We want to make sure that our students feel the, feel that, too, when they walk in the door, that they have a teacher that they connect with. So, you know, I'm not sure what sort of suggestions you have, and I'm hoping we have an opportunity to ask some more questions about this. Maybe, you know, down the line, when we get a little bit more information from school to school, but I think the best question I can ask you is, you know, how we, we had two-thirds of our staff taking this survey, right? That's what you, you responded to me to, which is, which is great. I'm just trying to figure out how we get from fifty-six, I think it was fifty-six percent to, to the target of eighty percent. So do they give any additional feedback?
On the staff satisfaction? That is something that the individual schools are going to be working at. There is a drill down on, each of these is a composite of multiple questions. And so the, we do have the detail on the individual questions. All of that will be published tomorrow, but has been available to all of the administration to really look at their, not just the global district overview, but specifically what's going on at the individual schools. And this is part of their S I P, so.
That would be great, because I just know how much is, is being done to try to support them, and I want to make sure that they're feeling that as well. And I think once we get, I guess, a little bit more information with the drill down from school to school, I may have some additional questions, but, and thank you for sharing the other information about the risk assessments. I think that that was a piece that a lot of us were probably missing the clarity on, so, thank you.
Ms. Downey?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to follow up to ask if we could just get the data of the response rates, the number of questionnaires. Is that gonna come to us?
Yeah.
When did that come?
It's in the.
In, in the questions that I asked, Dr. Jones had sent that all to you.
That we just got it. We just got it in our inbox.
Like, oh, okay, today? Wait, okay. I did not, yeah.
We just got it, though, yesterday.
Oh, okay.
So we worked really hard to try to get it to you. I just didn't want you to think we didn't get it.
Okay.
And I think we will, this is just the first time, this is like high-level stuff. We're going to dig into this again.
That's fine. Thank you.
Oh, it's, we're gonna, thank you. We are tying this to the retreat in October for student achievement, so. But yeah, sticking with that, I mean, I think Lil said it best, right? It was great to see the homeschool connection move ten percent over the past three years, but we also have to make sure, and that was great for parents. But the staff and the students need to feel that same growth.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think that's kind of the best way to sum it up, if I could do so, and are there any other questions, or should we? Okay, so, thank you, Jen. Going to, and that's, leads us right into the next agenda topic, strategic plan update. Dr. Mercanti Anthony.
So, so it is, and honestly, it is my great pleasure to introduce this, this agenda item, because we know it's been a long time coming, and there've been jokes about it, and I've joked about it and things like that, but I do think at the board level, but in reality, the draft strategic plan that comes to the board tonight really is set up to continue our path towards excellence. Let me just introduce it briefly, and then I want to turn it over, turn it over to Dr. Jones, who will explain and walk through what you, what you received here, what we're looking at, and as far as the, the goals here and the plan forward. They, so what we, when we talk about the strategic plan, I think it's very important for us at the board and for the community to understand what it is and what it's not. So twelve, thirteen years ago, there was a very large community conversation that the board, a previous board engaged in around the vision of the graduate and what twenty-first century skills graduates of the system should, should have. It's a very thoughtful document. The strategic plan ever since then, and this next five-year version of the strategic plan, really what it seeks to do is help support the more fully realized that vision of the graduate for students. That is the purpose of the strategic plan. The strategic plan focuses on the core work of the district when we're talking about teaching and learning, focusing mostly on academic achievement and the other growth of students. It is not all encompassing of all work of the board. Right? Strategic plan is not a capital document. It's not about board policy and things like that. It's very much focused on the teaching and learning and the work of the schools. Each schools, each building's school improvement plan will be based off the strategic plan, and that's, again, grounded in teaching and learning. The other thing to make sure to point out here before I turn it over, in, what you're looking at here are some of the goals. This is not the plan. It's not the whole plan. There are some strategies here, things like that, but when we drafted, when the, when the strategic plan committee and Dr. Jones and other administrations, we, we wanted to, we were very clear that what we didn't want was this version of the strategic plan to be a very detailed five-year, we're gonna do this in year two, this in year three, this in year four, because we know things change. And we know when we're talking about improvement science and continuous improvement, we know that you can't plan that far ahead. So what you see here, which we talked about, which we've previously talked about, the board, to the board, or our six stretch goals. We define stretch goals as audacious, ambitious, long-term, long-term girl, goals that will help us more fully realize vision of the graduate. They, you see tied to each of those stretch goals, a metric for each year to help support us gradually getting there over the course of five years. But the strategies, how we're gonna do that is intentionally fuzzy. We have some broad strokes here. The strategic plan, plan committee will continue to meet, and we'll continue to meet and have conversations at the board level and the community and P TAC and everybody else, but those strategies are going to evolve over time as we measure the metrics year by year and month by month. All that said, so with that said, let me turn it over to Dr. Jones to, to, to talk a little bit about what you're looking at.
Just before you start, I think it's awesome, what's not here, and what I think also needs to be here, are there there are additional documents that are hyperlinked to these. You'll see where it says detailed outline and methodology. I think that's also important when you're reviewing this as, as members of the board, as well, as well as members of the community to understand, because it goes into a much greater detail regarding the strategies and how the metrics are to be achieved. So I think if we could get those posted by tomorrow so that people could pull them up, I think that'd be helpful for this. Unless it's already on there by hyperlink, it's just not printed. Okay, got it. Good.
I was just gonna add one other thing. One of the biggest things we had talked about was ensuring that our, our staff had buy-in to this, because if they don't have buy-in, this wasn't gonna work. They did, so I, I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that. We're not just demanding of things, that they were involved, very involved in, in a lot of coming up with some of these strategies and plans. And I was gonna say additionally, one of the biggest things we had missed out on our first time was our goals to be, you know, time-sensitive, to be something that we could, that were measurable, and a way for us to be able to go back and sort of measure how we were doing along the course. And that is really something that is built in here, and you'll see as we move forward, and as both Karen and Michael Joseph mentioned, that I think that there's there, there's an element that, of flexibility here, and so that's why things might be, I think the term you used was a little fuzzy, was that things do change as we move forward, and we may see something that's working and something that's not, and we want to be able to be able to make some of those changes in the strategies as we go forward to still meet those targets and metrics. I don't know if that helps, but that was just, I know, something I wanted to share that we've talked about for a long time in building this.
Mike, if you don't mind, I know you were gonna bring it up for us, just so that people that are here can actually see it. So first of all, let me say, I, I met with Dr. McCarthy Anthony right when he took over this committee, and one of the things we talked about was trying to have really, at the time, I always call it planning on a page. I think you call it something else, but we both were of the, the like mindset that what we were trying to avoid also is having a document that's two inches thick, and that staff never really can grapple and understand, because it ends up going on the shelf after you have the first presentation, and then people get so busy they can't go back to it. We've had great feedback on this, because we have shared it with, like, our senior team. It was shared at our back-to-school meetings out at the buildings, and it's so easy to understand. I mean, the work is really clear on, on the goals, and I think you'll see how they do tie back to the climate survey that even Jen was just sharing, and one of the reasons we put that climate survey on tonight was so you could see the link. So if we look at, first of all, like, the one in the yellow at the top, goal number one, graduation rate. And what you'll see is at the bottom of that graduation rate, there's a link, and that's what Karen was just referencing, the detailed outline and methodology. And again, this is draft, so we continue to work on that. Can you go ahead and click on that, just so people can see? So everything is embedded in here where you can actually see the metric. We have, you know, the mission, the vision, and then below that are how we want to accomplish that. And I will say, where you see the cardinal down on the bottom, the one on the top, the first one, those are common across different, different goals. So that just helps you know that that's something that we're working on across everything. And when you get over to the right, go ahead and go back, Mike, to the main page. When you look at the right on the success metrics, one aspect that we've talked a lot about, and some of you have different opinions. I had good meeting this week with Karen Kwaski, and I met early in the morning, and I also met with Karen Hirsch. She's on the committee before our meeting tonight. And we, we've pushed this to actually be stretch goals, and that's something that some of the board may feel like, oh, that's such a lofty goal, and that's gonna be really difficult, but we, that's what we set out to do. So for graduation rate, you'll see that's at ninety-nine percent. We know that's very doable. And when we look across the state, one of the reasons it is a focus, it can be a number of things that can cause a metric. It could be that we're not tracking our students as they move and they leave us. Is it a data issue? Is it that we've been, we've had the mentality that it's okay if you just graduate in the summer? So we're not intervening soon enough for, you know, freshmen and sophomores to have the credits they need. But right now, where our graduation rate is, it's not, it's not bad. It's a strong graduation rate, but in the state of Connecticut, we're about eighty-second or eighty-fifth. So we know that we can actually do better in that area. The second goal is mastery of reading, and I don't think that's a surprise to anybody, that reading is at the core of everything we do. It's, it's across every content area. And you can see some of the things that we've been in the works over the last couple of years, when we were kind of, didn't have a plan. We extended the old one, but it didn't stop our work. And I have to say, from the curriculum team, from all of our teachers out in the buildings, they didn't let COVID, we didn't hit pause, and they implemented brand-new programming in the middle of COVID, and I think that, I want to say that, because I think we should be extremely, extremely proud of our staff and our administrators. When you look at the mastery of reading again, one of the things that's a little bit different about this metric is we're looking at, and if you look at success metric, a hundred percent of fourth-grade students who've been with GPS for five or more years are reading on grade level. And that's, that is the way that the state has changed, and they're actually looking at it from a five-year view as well. One of the reasons we're doing five years, it helps us understand if our programming is working. When we look across, especially, I'm gonna say, our elementaries, it's probably easier to see. Some buildings have more in-migration, out-migration. Some buildings have more E L students. The reality is, if you came to this country and you don't speak English, you're probably not gonna be mastering the, the grade level assessment in three years. That's asking a lot. We know that from all of the research that's out there. But the other caveat to that, I would say, is it doesn't mean we're not watching our results every single year. I mean, we have to look at every single day. We're looking at every student that we need to intervene on. And this board's been very supportive of math interventionist and reading interventionist and helping us get to that. So again, you could click on those detailed outline and methodology, and you would see that, but I won't do, we don't need to do that right now, Mike.
Tony, while you're just on this one, here's my thinking. I mean, my concern by saying a hundred percent, which it, I, I applaud it, but I'm also, are we setting ourselves up for failure if we say a hundred percent? Because there are always students who are gonna struggle. So I, I, I'm just throwing it out there that I just, you could put it at ninety-nine. But when you say a hundred, that's like, we're gonna get everyone, and I am concerned that we're then saying, well, we didn't meet it. And then we're gonna be explaining it as opposed to saying ninety-nine. I just, I don't know, Karen, Karen's nodding her head yes, that's why.
I, you know, I, I guess I think of it a little bit differently, and we may not hit a hundred, maybe we'll be ninety-one or ninety-four. But I don't think we can go into a strategic plan thinking it's okay for any child to not be reading on grade level. And I think if they're not reading on grade level, I want to be able to sit in front of you and say, if we have six percent, what have we been doing over the, you know, five years of this plan, every year when we report back, if we're not seeing the growth? So, and the great thing is, the state also has the growth metric. When we do the retreat, you'll see that the way the state's measuring, I think it's gonna be very helpful for the board to understand, too, but I, I feel like it's okay, because if you can't read, everything else is gonna be incredibly challenging and across all content areas, so that, I think it's, it's a lofty goal, but it needs to be our goal.
On that note, the, please understand, too, Christina, that that hundred percent is in two thousand twenty-seven. That's a future board that's gonna have to explain that number, so, thank you.
If, if I could, if I could interject, it'd be great if we could let, let Dr. Jones get through everything, then maybe we'll talk about it, the, because not that this board has ever gone down tangents and talked about one line for twenty minutes, but maybe, maybe we can, maybe we can get through everything and then take questions.
So our third goal, of course, is mastery of math, mathematics. Again, you'll see some of those strategies that you're very aware of. The universal design for learning, all that training we did last year, that's really about making sure we're really keying into what every student needs. The one question I get here, and initially even, even from staff, we had a lot of discussion, is when you look at that Algebra I metric, the Board of Education, I think predating all of you, that's always been such an important goal, and it didn't really show up as much as our reporting metrics the last kind of five or seven years, but we've still been working on it, and that's the amount of eighth graders who take Algebra I in eighth grade. Now, people have said, well, if it's eighty for S B A and S H is eighty percent, why isn't Algebra I? But the reason why Algebra I is set at seventy-five is that it's very, if it was just set on their success in eighth grade, and an eighth grade assessment, that would be different. This is talking about seventy-five percent of our students are in Algebra I in eighth grade. So what that means is you would be putting, if you go higher than that, not every student needs to be in Algebra I in eighth grade, nor do they want to be. And for some of those students, you're setting them on a trajectory where then they're starting their freshman year with geometry, they're taking Algebra II, they're now into pre-calc, you're putting them on a calculus track. And really, that should be a parent decision along with the teachers, and we should celebrate if we have seventy-five percent, but for some students, it's just not, it's not appropriate, and that's why it's set at seventy-five. The next three, you'll see tie right back again to some of the survey information. We want to continue to increase, to increase family and community engagement to feel a stronger sense of connection and support. And I have to say, this is one area that I know when Jen Lau and I looked at the data, we were so excited that coming out of COVID, like, on, on our family engagement, that it's up like twenty-two percent. And that's after COVID, and I really thought for sure last year it would just fall apart, because just the mask issue alone, people were so frustrated by the end of last year. But we want to continue on this trajectory, working with our parents, and one of the things you'll also notice that's on here, the number two under strategy is to increase the frequency depth of curriculum instruction in parent education-based workshops. We started that over the last year or so. We are trying to intensify that. Our parents have said they, they want more assistance on how to help their children at home. So we're doing lots of workshops for parents that want to learn about big ideas. Well, how do you find the tutor help when they're at home, and you, as a parent, don't know how to do that math, because you haven't done it in twenty years? So we're really working on that, and it's built in. Um, so we're really working on that and it's built into here. Also, the increased student belonging, I think all of you, um, you know, you, your comments um talked about. We want every student to feel connected with our schools. And and again, we want to see that continue to grow. So if you go into that outline and methodology, you'll see some of the strategies that we're using uh that we're planning. Um, six is to increase positive working environment for teachers and staff. Um, and really to prioritize professional growth as well for all of our staff. This is really important. Uh, you know, I guess the good news is, again, coming out of COVID, I I have to say, I I don't like us being at like fifty eight. But the idea that we were there before COVID and we were still there at the end of last year actually shocked me. I thought it would have dropped probably twenty percent because quite frankly, people were so exhausted last year after being in COVID. Um, I really, I really expected a drop. So I think we can only go up um by continuing to work as partners like with GEA. Um, and and being responsive to what we can do to make their jobs that much better. Um, so that's just kind of the draft. Um, again, it's really planning on a page. Everybody can understand it. And we're really doing a lot of this work right now. And I'm very excited about it. Um, it's been hard not to have really kind of our metrics and our goals. Um, because this, we didn't have the focus for everybody. And this ties so easily to what they're doing at the building level and in their site improvement plan. So this is our draft. I'm happy we finally presented it. Yippee. Ms. Downey.
Okay, just one more follow up. Um, on goal four, which we talked about, increase family and community engagement. Community engagement, I'm I'm gonna like, aren't we really trying to help our families? I'm not really sure what the community engagement element is and if that really is a priority. Um, I mean, there's community information, but it's really about the families. So I'm just kind of throwing that out as food for thought.
So here's how I would see family engagement on that. And and that'll, that's a good question for us to talk about, I think, from a a administrative level. I think engaging the community is everything from, and I think we've done a good job of it, neighbor to neighbor, engaging all of our, we have so many community partners that come in and tutor children after school, all of that.
Community services, but I think maybe that's, maybe it needs to be just rephrased. I just, because I think that's a little confusing to me, it seems like.
I was just gonna say, family and community engagement is, I think, also how this, if I'm in not incorrect, is also how the state sort of terms it. Um, and when you say community, I think it's not just general community or families. When you say families, it, community engagement is also the wider version of their family, right? There, it's not, you know, other parts that that connect. Um, so I I think that it's, it's just the term that's used, I think, outside, not just here, it's all over. Um, and much like Christina, I guess the one comment, and I know you just addressed it, I had asked about the math. But I think it's maybe it's important when we go back in and talk about a hundred percent reaching that math. Uh, reading mastery, I'm sorry, that you note here and it's, we should highlight it, it's all students who've been here for five years or more for fourth grade. Um, and for eighth grade, it's, you know, five years or more uh reading on that grade level. I mean, there will always be outliers. We're gonna always have a student that has learning differences. I know our special education audit uh pointed things out like that and we're working really hard there to to to, which we'll hear about later. Uh, discover these issues sooner and provide support sooner. Um, but maybe there's a way we can just add something in there. Just like I said, to me, it's, I don't want to set up for failure. I want to set up for success. And there were, will always be outliers and I don't want a teacher or a student to ever feel that they're the outlier because they can't get to that point. Um, but I, the question I actually had also was goal number one graduation rate. And I think that this may be something that isn't addressed in the added thing that maybe you can address a little bit. Uh, you were talking about flexible scheduling at GHS. I wasn't sure, I mean, if you could sort of address that so people understood what that is. And uh, you know, I'll just leave it at that as my first question.
I mean, flexible scheduling can be everything from, um, how are we still intervening on something like reading for a student who's in ninth or tenth grade? And still is struggling to read. When do they fit that into their schedule? How are we uh working with families for those students who really want to be more career ready? And they want to be able to, for instance, attend Stanford and go to the technical school. It's very, very difficult with our current schedule. So do we need to look at a school within a school in order to provide more opportunities um for students and especially for some of our students who find the expense of college so challenging? You know, they can graduate already ready, you know, to earn a job. Um, and and be able to have a strong skill set to be able to go to college if that's what they choose to do. Um, or stay within that profession because that's what they love, like an automotive program. So I think it's really trying to look at making sure we're meeting the needs of every student uh and working with every family.
I think that's great because it's what we talk about. Not every student's an academic. Some students are artists, some are athletes, some are great with their hands and 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 don't want to, like you said, go to college uh directly after school. So I think that's a really nice way to sort of focus it. Um, and again, I know we talk about monitoring individual social, emotional, academic supports. Um, and I didn't know if you meant for every single student or students, again, that were on the risk behavior uh scale, um, or how we're, you know, I think we can talk about that in deeper depth later. But how to, how to get there, because I know it's something that's truly needed, which we'll, I guess, get to when we get to the next report.
I I think that has to be for every student. It again, it's just helping every student find success. And when you, one of the the things that's fascinating to me on the risk assessment is if you listened last year across the country, I, that that data surprised me when I saw it. But we also added social workers in elementary. Did that have an impact? Um, you know, because we're trying to be very proactive, pre K through twelve plus. And I think our our staff are doing that. So I think that really is every student, but they're at different levels of need.
So thank you. And I want to also thank my uh other committee members for, you know, getting this out here this year. It's great. We'll see a lot of growth.
So I would just make a suggestion. Um, and I'm happy to do it for everyone else. I don't think I need to to bore everyone with the comments that I had given Tony earlier this week, but and maybe with Michael Joseph's and Karen, if your comments are written down, I'm happy to share them with the entire board so you can see what comments we had to this draft in particular. But I think uh, if you could, if you have more in-depth comments and you want to ask questions, maybe just to start circulating them amongst the group so we can start collecting them and then we can discuss them at our next committee meeting so that we can uh grab them. Because there's a lot of information here and given the the hour of the of the day, um, you might want to dive into it more and and your comments might mean more to the rest of us if you wrote them down.
Fair enough. I'm good with that. Everyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for getting this in front of us. I know this is a huge undertaking and the graphics were fantastic. So with that, let's move to the special education update. Dr. H. Oh, my gosh. Did you guys want to say something? I'm sorry, we made you stay for this whole thing and then good night. Okay. But it was nice to see those smiling faces.
Before you go, Kate, before you go on that, you guys did some tremendous work and I don't think it should go without being noticed or said, and we really, really do appreciate it. Um, obviously, we, the three of us sat on the committee, but we did not do what created this. You guys all did, and I think it needs to be recognized. I recognize it, the rest of the board. And I want to make sure that everybody here and still online realizes the effort that went in to create this document because I do think it's it's excellent. So thank you very much.
And the work behind the document that's taking place every day in our schools.
So you have to go home and get some sleep as a result. Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Special education update, Dr. H.
So I did the recording and posted it with the board docs.
I wanted to give everyone a test if they listen to the video. Okay.
Of course they did.
Okay, so where might Dr. H live? You must live in a city. Did you record this at home?
No, I actually, I I know why you're asking. I actually recorded it in the office.
Oh, my, was there a serious traffic situation in the?
So, so in my office, when you can hear the fire department, um, I have to say that it took me an hour to record the five and a half minutes um between the noises. There, there were a couple. So, yes.
It's like, maybe she commutes from New York City. I'm so intrigued.
So now you know what the noise is, what it sounds like at Havmire.
Okay, so that was my big question. No, so anyway. Okay, go ahead.
I only have one question. I'm, by the way, being a New Yorker, I didn't even, I literally tuned all of that out. I like literally didn't hear a single honk behind you.
I live in that country.
So I I was gonna say, I just know that uh, you know, having visited some of the schools, I know, having read a lot of anecdotal uh details of in a lot of articles about what's going on in here elsewhere, you know, that we have a lot of, and we've talked about this, and a lot of an increase of students with needs, many of whom aren't really, don't have IEPs, don't have five oh fours. I know that we're seeing a lot more increase in needs, especially from students going from elementary to middle. Um, you know, so I just wanted to sort of ask a quick question sort of about staffing. Uh, just if we have enough support staff, our psychologists, our paras, um, if we have open positions and something, you know, I just want to make sure that we have that in place because all the work you're doing is so incredible.
Thank you. We have um for vacant positions, all of our special education teacher positions have been filled. Um, we are waiting for some that we recently hired that need to still be released from their school district. But we've covered that with internally, some of our um substitute teachers um have come back and are are filling those classes. Our vacancies really are with our school psychologists. Um, we have um a school-based school psychologist position open, an evaluation team, school psychologist position that's open. Um, a part-time school uh psychologist open and a maternity leave as well. So um, it's, it's a.
If you're a mental health professional and you're listening to this, please take a look at what.
I I was talking with a school psychologist at one of the private schools today and I was like, you know, we have some openings. Are you, are you interested? You know, for, I'm out recruiting everywhere I can. Um, so that's where our vacancies are. Um, we do have some para vacancies. I know that HR has been working so hard to recruit as well as to process um the paras to be able to get them into the uh, to be able to get them into the schools. Um, so every day they're filling up. Um, so we still have some vacancies, but we're we're getting there. Um, so it's a.
The fact that we we have filled all the special education educator roles is already a big step forward. So that's great.
Michael Joseph.
So first, I I want to commend uh Dr. H for modeling the um, the spirit of lifelong learning and learning how to do the the video because I know that was that was great. Um, so I have a bunch of questions, but I'm, for in the interest of time, I wanted to limit it to the the most important here. Uh, can you explain um um what it means when you, when you say that the state has found this disproportionate?
Sure. So the state has specific guidelines in looking at different eligibility's in different um categories um based on ethnicity. In the area of um intellectual disability, under the category of Hispanic, um, the state has found that we are disproportionate. Um, we are disproportionate if we are, have a um risk ratio of a three point zero or more. Um, our risk ratio in that area is a four point one, four point two. Um, so each year we look at that data and um they look for, are you declining or are you staying the same? We were in somewhat of a decline within a three to four and then last, last October, our number popped back up to a four. So the state has found that we're disproportionate in that area. Uh, the other area that we are disproportionate in is speech and language in the area uh for our Hispanic students. So again, the risk ratio is um, we are a three point three in that area. And so that's an area that the state is monitoring our disproportionality in.
So what are our next steps there?
So our next steps are um, one of, so part of the requirement for being found disproportionate is part of our IDA grant is a set aside to be able to address that. Um, part of what we have done is um, Mr. Dan Katz, who happens to be here, um, our new hire is part of his responsibility is evaluating and supervising our evaluation teams and working with our evaluation teams at the schools to look at our evaluation, our identification process when we're doing our assessments to make sure that we are identifying um our students in the appropriate category. Um, and that we're um considering all eligibility's we're testing correctly. So that's one of the corrective actions. Um, the other is that we're looking through our MTSS process. What are we doing in terms of intervening? Um, and so looking at um, working with specifically speech and language um to look at our processes of identification and what we can do on the early end before the identification.
I don't want to editorialize too much, but I can understand that with speech and language, they um, where the bilingual evaluation is always, you know, a challenge and and key to that. On ID, I mean, it is what it is there. They, um, but I can say that you can, it seems kind of silly the state would be um, holding us accountable for that. I mean, that's, those are pretty hard metrics when when we get to, when when we're when we're identifying students with that particular classification. Um, okay, so the only other thing I wanted to, I was hoping you could talk about because you you you've mentioned this in the uh, and in the report, the um, I've tried to hope, talking about a little bit about co-teaching um and the plan moving forward. I don't know if we've given, if we really know the next wave of expansion, especially since our pre K numbers are up. If we, if we know at this point, if we're if which way we're going, they um, or if we have to go both ways, like both laterally and up and, you know, you know what I mean? Go ahead, it's like.
Yes. So um, so that is part of the budget discussion right now. So and as Dr. Jones gets ready for her budget presentation, those are things that we're we're considering and we're looking at is both expanding from, so our first grade can move into second grade. So right now we have a kindergarten and a first. Um, so those first graders can move to second as well as looking at our numbers and our success of our kindergarten and do we need to open up another kindergarten at another school to both um because of the popularity, uh, you know, we have five spots at one school. Do we need to open that at another school to be able to um have more students in there? So that's part of the budget discussion. Um, and so I ask you guys to keep that in mind as it's being presented. Um, that that it does come with the cost of a teacher for that, for both, two teachers, if we go both horizontal and lateral.
And I think we're gonna have to think about some metrics to to show how how the program's gaining success, even though it's so small, but the.
I was so pleased with the public comment today and having that parent share experience and um that's, that's why we all do what we do and to have that shared was um I'm so happy.
Ms. Downey.
Um, I was gonna actually ask a question that to to kind of, the co-teaching and the unique learner, I was gonna ask you about how those were going, how many students we have in those, because I I did listen to the video a couple of days ago, it might have been in there. But um, if you could just give us a quick overview on the co-teaching and the unique learner in terms of children, how many, et cetera.
So our kindergarten has four students. Our first grade I think has two, could be one, but I I I thought that we were at two. And then our unique, our unique learner has one student in it right now. But we have a couple other families that are looking at the program now that there's another student that's in there um to be able to see the program running.
Okay, thank you. And then um, just you mentioned school psychologists because kind of it was interesting um first couple of days of school when we were making the rounds and it was interesting, several schools commented on changing, I guess, we've reallocated how we um have them in the different schools. If you could just kind of speak briefly to how you made those decisions. I know we're short-staffed, but kind of assuming you have a full staff, how you would do it.
The reallocation doesn't have to do with being staffed fully. It has to do with creating equity across the district and looking at the numbers of students within the school and looking at the workload within the schools. Um, so there has been a big disparity between certain schools and certain caseloads. So you could be a school psychologist and be responsible for uh fifty five identified students, or you could have twenty identified students. So the, so it's a big difference. And so looking at how we can create a little bit more equity and make sure that all students are getting what what they need. So it's not trying to take away services from anybody. Um, really looking at the analysis of the caseloads, of the workload, the time, um, and making sure that everybody can get what they, can get what they need.
Thank you.
Ms. Costin.
So I'm a little surprised by the very few number of students. Was that, did you have a target in mind for the co-teaching classroom, the unique learner program? Did you have any targets that, or expectations? Because I, I think it's a, you know, looking at it as a practical matter, you know, families having to choose to take their child out of their neighborhood school to attend a co-taught classroom, you know, in, in central Greenwich, I mean, Koskow is pretty central, but that sort of says to me, we're missing a broad swath of students that would benefit. And obviously, I know the financial constraints probably don't allow us to do that at every school. But is, that seems to be a very relatively small number.
For the co-teaching, it is supposed to be a small number. So in terms of, we're looking at a cap of five students. So if we look at the kindergarten, we have four of the five. We also don't want to pack it so that, for example, we had a family who moved in from another district first grader. And we were able to talk about, do you want to go to your homeschool or do you want to go to the co-teaching? Which was actually the program that had been recommended from the previous. Recently, there was a, another recommendation for a co-teaching. So we want to make sure we have the ability to, we, we want to start out full. So you're right. But at the same time, also have, have room to move a student in if we need to. The, the goal is to be able to offer a continuum of options. So we want to make sure that we, we have a full class, but also have the ability to have students who move in. For the kindergarten, it was a little bit easier because we were moving from preschool into kindergarten. First grade meant for some students, it was changing schools. But we still, as I said, we, there are still conversations about some students where they might move into that. So we're really only looking at a max of five students within that program. So those numbers are good. For our co, for our unique learner, I think I had many conversations with parents who are interested, but it's really hard to be the first one. And so, you know, that, that's one of those, those things that since we've had one student, we've had a lot of more interest in the program and parents are looking at it in a different light. Because there's something to visit now. It's very, it was very hard in the spring to imagine, there's this class we're going to have. You weren't able to meet the teacher, you can't see the room. And so we now have that. And so now it's a little bit of a different conversation.
Good to know. Thank you.
Karen, anyone else?
I just wanted to ask a quick question because I know this is just sort of a quick overview and, you know, I know there was a bunch of information included in, oh, my brain just went, where'd it go? In our overview. You know, the timeline of where things are and where we're going to be. I know a lot of stuff is, was completed in January 22. There were other things that said, you know, we were in process of in 21, 22, and things that are coming down the pike. I just didn't know when we might see an update, just at some point during the year or earlier on, you know, the, the action plan, the overview. I just know a couple of questions had, had been asked, because there was some stuff that was still in progress. And so I don't know when we might be able to just get an updated version of that, where we are with some of those topics.
So in June, I had done a presentation to the board, and with it being summer, not much had changed. I mean, while we still were working on things and putting things in place, there really wasn't a drastic change in where we were in the action plan from the presentation to June to, to now in September. So the next time, I think I'm on in another six weeks-ish. And so at that time, we'll have moved into the school year and can give another further update.
Yeah, you're on for November 16th.
Yeah, that's what I was just double checking, because I was gonna say, there's some stuff in the, the, before that I know we've already completed or were on target to complete. And I just know it hasn't been updated. And I just wanted to make sure that we have that at some point so that we can change some of those yellows to greens and so forth. Nope. The, the amount that you've gotten done in such a short window of time is absolutely incredible. I've heard wonderful feedback from parents and families throughout the district. And we had speakers earlier tonight sort of addressing some of that. I think that that, that speaks so loudly, at least to me, because of the years spent standing where you are begging for, for change for our families. And now we're seeing it happen on a daily basis. I think it's fantastic.
Thank you very much, Dr. H. Okay, with that, going to Central Middle School. Okay. Central Middle School update, Dr. Jones.
I really don't have much to add, so I won't like the labor, because I think Laura Costin actually talks about, yeah, talked about that. They're meeting weekly, I believe, moving full steam ahead.
We're a cheery bunch. We meet every Tuesday at 8:00 AM.
Does Mr. Hilli want to say something, since he's here? Did he need to add anything? No. Perfect. And I even, I appreciate the efficiency of the comment. Okay. With that, as we've promised to then always have Western Middle School update, I'm hoping for a robust update here.
It's tough to give a robust update. Right now, the remedial, remedial action plan is in with deep, it's in with EPA. Last week, they did send a letter they wanted us to notarize, which means you're getting towards the end. But we were continuing to wait for their final approval. And then the next, the next step is when we will start into that public hearing piece. If you remember where we'll have, probably, probably in here, we'll have a, the public hearing where people could come and support the project or not.
We have any sense on one that might be?
We were really aiming for October, although that last update, that's kind of where we were still sitting. So I'm hopeful.
Waiting for it next?
You have to wait until the deep in the EPA, actually, sign off on the remedial action plan.
Remember the whole RAP? Anyone else? Okay. All right, that's very good. All right. Financial and staffing report, Blaze, you're up.
Everybody, can you hear me?
You're good. Go ahead.
All right. So the first item I have before you is the year-end report for fiscal year 22. Basically, pretty straightforward for standard reporting, but normally I think this goes before the board, maybe in July, but you had a pretty packed summer. So this report is here before you for review and approval. There's, there's not too much that should stand out from some of the prior reports I was looking at. Summary page on the front, operating was 99.7% fully executed for fiscal year 22. The, under, I think, some real strong prioritization from Dr. Jones, the GPS made some great execution on open capital. So that's reflected in the capital numbers. And the federal programs, obviously, had major impacts on the school lunch program, which you would see in the financials there. But if any, other than that, if anybody has any specific questions or would like me to run through anything specific, let me know.
Ms. Costin.
So I, we got some questions, at least I did, about the school lunch program and how long it'll be free for all. That's until the money runs out is, is all we know.
I think the last I heard, and Dr. Jones might have a better number or timeframe, but we're looking at planning purposes sometime between the end of October or November.
And then I just looked at exhibit two and I noticed the preschool tuition goes into the town's general fund. Is that?
The revenue. Yeah.
But it's our school. Why do they get the money?
Yeah. And let me just make sure I'm looking at the same thing. So in exhibit two.
Preschool tuition, $500,000.
Yeah, we're recording the revenue, but I don't think that actually goes into the general fund. But let me double check on that for you and I'll send you an email.
I, yeah, thank you.
No? Okay. All right. This is now information. Okay, so let's go on to budget transfers. Blaze.
Transfers this month are informational only. Most of them are all pretty routine, just internal JVs. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions about them?
I had a question. With respect to number two, you're moving it from administration to instruction. So it, that's office services to, the program is CIPL, which is rental maintenance and software. So that's the same code? I think they're called general codes. That's the same general code?
Same, it's the same major object code. Yep. So those are 200s.
So, because what caught my eye is just the difference between, so that's the same, is this, is just the other component with instruction? It, actually, you know, it'd be helpful going forward if you have the general object codes, like a column for the general object codes going forward. So we could just see where they, what they are.
I think that's a good idea. So in this one, you're going, we're going, and it's going from 600 to 620. And the major object codes are staying in 200s. And I think we'll add those on the next report.
Yeah, that would be helpful. I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I like that.
Great. Any other questions? This topic? Okay. Blaze, may it always be this easy. Okay. Next, we are going to rental rates and tuition and fees.
Sean is very mad right now.
Exactly.
Yes.
You don't think Sean's online watching?
First one that I think we'll look at are the rental rates. I think that was in your packet first. So what I think we would be asking the board to do, if it's possible, is to vote on the rental rates. Some background here, if it's possible, but otherwise we could look at doing this at the next meeting. Basically, because of COVID, I think, there was no contract. I think the last time the board voted on this, we had the attached approved rental rates from 2019. The rental rates are primarily driven by labor. So these rates are basically updated to reflect the cost of contract that we're at now with the new hourly rates and the Teamster rate. Right now, because we're using the 2019 contract labor rates, we're actually running a deficit in the rentals, like from outside groups, because we're paying them at the current fiscal year contractual rate. But the fee is from, you know, prior year labor rates. Which is why we brought this before you now.
Okay, that's really important. I would just like to know why everybody's rate went up, except for the auditorium student employees.
Yes.
They stayed at $22.
They did.
Everybody else got a bump.
I think at the moment, just in the, in the term of my own timeframe for the amount of things that I'm processing and also working on at the moment with Dr. Jones in the last three weeks, something we did talk about was, once we have a little more time, was digesting the entire fee, fee structure and looking at a review for the last time, you know, some of the fee rates and some of these things and what we should be doing for a couple of these. At the moment, though, we thought it was important to just get to the labor rates. That would warrant a larger discussion. So this before you right now is just updating the labor rates to match the contractual increases.
We'd have to suspend our rules, guys, obviously, if we want to take action on this. I mean, I'm happy to do, well, he's, they're kind of asking us to. Yeah.
I think by policy purposes, we have to. The, I think we, there's a policy that says that we have to approve these rates.
Correct, right. And it seems like we're
We would just have to take a vote to move it from, from discussion to action item.
That's fine.
We just need two thirds.
But I have a quick, can I have a quick question before we do that? So Blaze, I, this is, thank you for informing us. And I know you said we're running a deficit. If we work to approve these tonight or whenever, the question is, is, does that retroactively affect anybody that signed a contract for upcoming rentals? Or, you know, or do we keep with whatever's signed as of today, if we vote this in today?
You're talking about, so people that are planning their events next month that already have. I, I think that would be a good question. I, I don't know what the historical practice has been as they were updated, since they have been effective, but
If they have a signed contract with us for a particular rate, us changing this will not proactively go back and change their contract. We have a signed contract with that number.
And it actually makes all the more reason that we should sign it, vote on it tonight for future, all the contracts we're gonna sign in the next
No, that's what I was just double checking. I wanted to make sure that if people have already signed and it stays there, but if they have it out now and it's not signed, that they'll get a new contract.
Correct. If it's not signed.
To Blaze's point, I mean, we can make this a broader discussion at one point, like I'd argue we should be charging more. But I think at this point, let's just get it right so that we're not losing money. So I think we need a motion to waive the first read is what we need.
No, it's just a motion to take it up as an action item.
You think so?
Yeah, because it's not a first read, second read. That's only policies are required.
Okay.
So it's a motion to convert it, hereby move that we take this up as an action item this evening.
Happy to second that. All in favor? That passes 8-0. Now you want to put the motion on the table?
Motion to approve the rental fee structure as proposed by Mr. Levitan.
Okay, Michael Joseph seconded that. All in favor? That passes 8-0. Okay. Sean really is annoyed. That was super easy. Okay.
Thank you. And I do think that you brought up a good comment that, you know, a larger conversation at looking at the fees is probably warranted at this point. So that's something that we can work on.
Great. Okay, so now tuition and fees.
Tuition and fees. Two parts here. We're talking about the, you know, non-resident tuition program for GPS and town staff on Schedule A. And then we're also looking at the kindergarten program, which would be on Schedule B. And then we have the proposed tuition increases. I think we received a few questions about where the tuition rates kind of come from and what the logic is behind them. This administration, you know, inherited the tuition structure, similar to some of the fee structures. Historically, we've been increasing between 2 and 3%, you know, trying to balance inflation against, you know, wage increases and, you know, the burden, the shop cost increase. So that's kind of reflected before you, but I'm happy to take questions about what's specific from anybody.
Ms. Downey.
Just to confirm, so you're proposing a 3% increase on all these items, just to be sure we understand what we're voting on?
3% increase. Yeah. So the, the thought there was between the 2 and 3% historical, without kind of changing something to that, with inflation, what it is. The higher end, 3% makes more sense. Also, looking at the weight, the contractual wage increases and where the labor market kind of is, try to balance those two sides of the equation.
This is information only, so if we want to maybe follow up with questions?
Because this is for next year, right? For 2324, correct, Blaze?
This is for 2324.
So it is important as they're building the operating budget, but I think we could take it up if we want as an action item in, you know, maybe the next meeting, because I imagine this, you'd want to go through this a little bit more in detail. Yes, go ahead.
Just a quick, so this is for, I'm sorry, for 2324, but I see the, there's only a column here for 22.
The first two pages, based on historical format, yeah, are like information. I think it's also a report, so you have some context for what we're talking about. And then the fee is actually starting on, on the third page of the packet on this topic. the third page of the packet, on this topic. It'll say proposed tuition rate, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Page one.
Hmm, yeah.
Okay.
But so, for example, if you look at biology, that was the class that you ended up not running during last summer. And so my question was, is that because of the cost of it? Or was it because you couldn't get staffing? Okay. Any other questions on this topic? Okay, well, we will obviously bring this back, so we can ask some questions of Blaze in the interim, if there are any. Okay, let's move to action items. Uh, Blaze, you're still up, budget resolution, can I get a motion to put this on the table, um? One second. Does anyone have it in front of them? Go ahead, Laura, could you read it?
Motion to put the fiscal year twenty-three budget resolution on the table.
Twenty-four.
Says twenty-three on it. Approve the attached fiscal year twenty-four budget resolution as proposed.
Thank you, I will second.
The title is incorrect.
I will second that, okay, Blaze.
Slipping through the cracks here. Sorry about that. So, yeah, the resolution, um, this is the language that's currently taken out of the approved budget from last year, um, no change except for the change in red. And as a reminder, these are the, uh, these get adopted with the budget from the town, which allows us to appropriate funds without having to go back through and seek R T M approval to get them assigned into an account code. So things like your basic, you know, this is what's really important, are two pieces of resolutions, it would be um, grant funding and having, so when we get the grant funding that's labeled in the resolutions, we can have them appropriated into the appropriate account code without having to get R T M approval on some of them. And then also what, what, what we're proposing here for athletics, um, basically, because the revenue goes to the general fund, unless we have a resolution, and this is for all departments, and it's particularly impactful for us at the Board of Ed. We have, uh, basically no ability to then recoup the related expenses with that. So if we start charging again for athletics, um, and the primary reason behind that is more for things like operational improvements for the experience, like crowd control, safety, um, ensuring equal representation for different sides, so there's a reason to implement ticketing, for example, there's costs associated with that. You have to have, you know, three ticket collectors collecting tickets, there's some staff expense there. The revenue generated from those sales goes into the town general fund, though, without this resolution. So this resolution here in red would be, would be basically modeled on what we do with the rental of the facilities, so it matches the expenses, and it would go back to the Board of Ed's operating budget, instead of going to the town's general fund. That, that's what the resolution here is proposed to do, that's the only change.
Do you have a comment, Joe? Do you have a comment?
Oh, no, we added that one, just.
Okay.
After discovering we didn't go towards that proper.
I like that, right?
Right, so to clarify, for years, um, ticket revenue collected at athletic events, that money has not stayed with the, with the district.
That's correct.
Well, we did just build a really nice new ticket booth, so this sounds like a perfect opportunity.
Why we did it, we have to do something with the ticket booth.
Well done, Joe.
How did we discover this?
I asked, where does the money go? And honestly, we couldn't find out. We didn't know.
Good job, Joe.
All right.
It was a good question.
Keep asking questions like that, Joe. All right.
I'd like to call the question.
All in favor of the motion on the table? That passes eight zero. Thank you, okay. Second and last action item, G E A teacher contract, would you like to make a motion, Joe, to put this on the table? It's actually not listed, so you could just say to approve the.
I would like to make a motion to approve the G E A teachers' contract.
I'm happy to second that, okay. All right, discussion, Joe?
Oh, yes, um. There's a lot of ways to negotiate a contract, I've done it professionally for forty years. A little about myself when negotiating, presently, I own a commodities company, and I am the global, uh, price setter of a commodity. Uh, the C M E pays me a lot of money to do that, and I price the forward curve based on hearing people's uh, fair valuation, some people try to cheat the number to be higher, some treat it to be lower. Uh, but I have to interpret what the fair price is, so I do that, and I run a business and make a whole lot of money based on that. I had the, uh, wonderful opportunity, uh, to talk to Lil about our contract, where she had a sincere, honest attempt at a negotiation to settle on a price. Uh, I was, there were other details in the contract which we worked out, which helped us, we narrowed it down to one uh, common denominator, which we had to work out, which ended up being the, uh, the G W I, the, the raise, increase across to all the teachers, and the, uh, uh, the, uh, contribution to the insurance. Uh, what I thought during this unique time of inflationary volatility, it would be impossible to settle this contract. I told, uh, Lil that, and in our, uh, our team negotiation, the spread between the bid and the offer, uh, the proposal that we wanted, the proposal they, they want you could drive a truck through, it was just not there. The only way we were able to get anything is because Lil's sincere honesty and her forthcoming about wanting to settle a contract at a fair valuation, she would go to her people, and she would make them come to a contract, because in this time, it was very important for us going forward to make sure we work together, it was very important to find a fair number, not try to, and also being very fiscally responsible, how to defend the interests of the town. In an interest rate rising environment, if the new contract is higher than the old contract, which in a, 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 when in an inflationary environment, it has to be, it'll of course be questioned, and I knew that we would be better protected if we went to arbitration, when an outside entity settled a contract for us, so we cannot be blamed. But still Lil pushed on, and she wanted to get a fair agreement on a contract, I thought our number was not going to meet her expectations or her team's expectations, but she looked beyond that and said there are a lot of issues that we'd like to settle, which we worked very closely on, there's a number which we can meet, which we can win, uh, agreed to this number, that we could actually have a giant morale boost, and the teachers who have worked so hard o- over the last couple of years, and pushed through the adversity that they did push through, to understand that the Board of Education is supporting the teachers in this contract negotiation, fully understanding that I was looking at protecting the interest of the town's, uh, funds. But she also said that she felt it was really important for us to work together, I truly feel it's very important for us to work together to strike this deal, this fair deal. And I might be asked by the R T M whether we got a good deal, no, we didn't. We got a fair deal, we got a deal that suited them, that she fought her people to come to, and I hope I can persuade my people to come, because this is a fair deal, and they deserve a fair deal after what they just went through.
Ms. Downey, would you like to add to that?
Wow, that's a tough act to follow, Joe. But it's, the night is late, so, um, I, I, I've said this to some of my colleagues, I wanted to, um, give kudos to Joe for managing this process well, kudos to Lil for her participation in the process, I think, um, there was a lot of time spent in Havemire this summer, um, by all of us, but I think the conversations were productive, um, I think we talked through a lot of the issues, and I, and I agree with Joe, I think we came out with a fair deal. I think we all looked at the environment we're in in the world, I think we looked at what a potential, if we couldn't make a deal, what an arbitration result would be, and I think to me, this was the right deal to come to, so I, I thank everyone for their efforts um, in this, Dr. Jones and Dr. Bud also, it, 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 everybody put a lot of time and effort into really thinking through the process and having discussions, which weren't always easy.
One more point, thank you, my partners working together on this, we did spend a lot of time doing this, but one thing that, tonight, there was a, a couple of different opinions on a lot of different things, but one thing that was universal in the room tonight, as we disagreed with many issues, they spoke their opinion, was that they supported one hundred percent of the people supported our teachers. They all did, no matter what their opinion was about other things, they support their teachers, and this is not an administration contract. And that's what they were, some of the people were just criticizing that, some were supporting the administration, this is not that contract. This is a contract with the teachers, and one hundred percent of the people in this room, uh, to support, support our teachers.
And I'll just add, I was the third person on the committee, this is my first time on the committee, and I was truly impressed by my colleagues, um, Joe led us through a huge effort, he included, um, many voices, which was thoughtful, and um, and I will say that Dr. Jones and Dr. Bud also did a great job on language, we focused a lot on the numbers, on the three of us, but they focused a lot on the language that hopefully also, um, improved things for the teachers as well as for the students and the parents and the community. Um, look, I think fair is the right word, it's fine, in the sense that neither one of us are elated, and that means we reached compromise. So, um, with that, any other comments from my colleagues?
Uh, yeah.
Cody?
Sure, um, I, uh, I wanted to compliment my colleagues who did the negotiation. Uh, I think it's a pretty impossible task, um, I was thinking about, I'm gonna get the quote wrong, but there's an H L Mencken line, it's like, you know, three foxes in a hand voting on what's for lunch, and I think the way that the legal structure negotiating with public sector unions is like that, so I actually am going to vote against it, but not because I think that you got a bad deal, you probably got the best deal that you can, I philosophically don't like, um, uh, the way this is done, and even if we ended up in a worse place in arbitration, I think anything that draws attention to the way the system works is, you know, mildly helpful, uh, but I could see how someone else would disagree with that. I think I was just looking at this, in Greenwich, the average compensation per teacher is a hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars, uh, the next highest in the state is New Canaan at a hundred twenty-one thousand. Uh, the lowest in the state, which that's probably not a great comparison, is Madison, Connecticut, eighty-five thousand, so we're, we have a very generous compensation structure. That's not any of your guys' fault, uh, there's a lot of stats on this, and when I reviewed them, it's, comes down to, it's actually not the teachers' union's fault either, if I were them, I would play my hand the way, you know, it's been dealt, it's, uh, there's a people, anyone who's still up and listening, the Municipal Employee Relations Act, it's a nineteen sixty-five law in Connecticut, is a disaster, it's what creates this system, it perpetuates this problem, the core, uh, problem with union contract in general is that it doesn't differentiate between, um, it doesn't pay teachers based on how good they are. Uh, so some teachers are overpaid, some teachers are underpaid, uh, and the difference is the quality, and we don't have a system that allows us to differentiate, um, so I wanted to just say, I think you guys did a great job, I think, uh, what a miserable way to spend a summer, uh, and I think everyone owes you guys, uh, for, you know, fighting the fight, um, and, uh, just wanted to explain, you know, the philosophical underpinnings for why I will vote against it, but, uh, give you guys the credit that's due.
Sure, unless anyone else wants to add anything of discussion? No? All right, so all in favor of the motion? All opposed? Sorry, that's fine, passes five three. Okay, thank you very much, um, let's go to agenda plan, and I think we do need to talk about a few things here. I'm going to put it out there, the biggest thing I know that we need to, well, we need to probably add one date, but most importantly, we need to, for the October sixth, add, um, the capital discussion. So I don't know if we want to remove anything, because I think we really need to make that the focus.
Yeah. I was gonna suggest just removing from October sixth, or just finding another date for, uh, our board, uh, professional development, because I think capital takes a little bit of precedence due to the time.
Agreed.
Can make a suggestion that our, our professional development would be enhanced by, to the extent every one of us attends the C A B convention in November, which has a variety of training opportunities and learning opportunities, like Cody, Cody, it's not propaganda, it, you get to choose which sessions you go to.
I have to be honest, it was actually really cool.
It's very educational about, it's about being on a board, um, and po- you know, there's one on policies, and there's things on, it, it's not, we'll have an offline. I, I will say, for those of us who went when we were first elected, which is Karen and myself, we, we got a lot out of it, um, not, you know, you always need a couple of nuggets, just need those few nuggets.
Say it was a.
Highly recommend, it was a great experience.
Okay, so, um, let's take board professional development off that, we can vote on Cody going to the conference, um. And then, let's add the strategic plan, is, go ahead, sorry, anything else? Oh, not the strategic plan, sorry, the capital. That's fair, do you want to put it on the sixth and make it more discussion, or do you want to, I'd know, I think we put on the twentieth, I think we really need to focus on okay, all right, so. So we're gonna move the strategic plan to the twentieth, um, it wasn't on there. As an action item. And we can provide comments per Karen's suggestion to you guys in the interim, and then you could take them up at the committee, correct? Okay, so then we'll add capital, and do we want to keep these three other items on the board retreat for October sixth? I think so.
What is the site improvement plans, Tony?
These are the school improvement plans, I, we could probably take it off if, because capital's gonna need so much.
But it kind of go, we, I mean, I would say that kind of goes with our strategic plan, if we're gonna be voting on it the next meeting. Just at least having a, an update on what they are.
Okay, so we can.
It gets kind of important.
Okay.
No, no, I would leave it on the sixth, because if we have to vote on anything, it, it's just, it, it's tied into what the strategic plan is, it's one of the, one of the goals.
Okay. All right, well, are we, and we're doing the curriculum plan review cycle, so in that meeting? That's heavy, we had to make capital first, so we're. Okay. All right, so, and you'll hopefully have a budget committee that could provide us feedback ahead of that, is that right, Christina?
We're working on getting a date together. And the other question is if it's gonna be that, I mean, it's gonna be a heavy date, we haven't heard data, like on achievement, achievement data for a couple of years, it's gonna be in-depth. It's a possibility, not that I necessarily want to move it any earlier, but even if you bump it to six thirty, we can do pizza again, um, on me this time. I'm okay with earlier.
I'm okay, we're not affecting the public in this case, because it's board retreat.
Okay with pizza.
Is everyone? I would like sushi.
I agree, I'm with Laura.
No soup for you.
Is everyone good with a six thirty start, if we even did that on October sixth?
Can we do that, Mike, can we just change a meeting time, like at Denacio?
Probably have to notice it as a special meeting, but that's okay.
It would become a special meeting, and that just freezes the agenda, but you can absolutely make the change.
But it's a retreat, so it's not, we're not, we're not.
Regularly scheduled meetings, so time or location changes trips a special meeting.
Yeah, but I mean, we're not voting on anything, so making it a special meeting's not like a major.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And also on November third, we have reference to operating and cap, we're, we're not having first read of the capital budget on November third, because we will have voted on it already. Well, and the same with December first. I was just about to say, and, and December fifteen. And so as a result, we need to put the vote of the capital budget to October twentieth, we have to move that.
Correct. No, it's moved up. Okay, so that goes on the twentieth. Okay, I also think that we need to add a, um, after our prior discussions with the chief, I think we'll probably need to have hopefully a fast meeting, um, an executive session, then followed by an action plan in the next week, so that we can go back to the B E T and R T M with a security plan. I know it's eleven ten, but.
But wait, well, I don't, we need to know when the chief's gonna be ready for it, I mean, it's kind of hard to plan a meeting if we don't know.
Yeah, it's probably hard to add, I mean, I'll, I'll just send an email to you guys to see if he, I thought he, he probably thought around a week, I think, but let's figure that out, and I'll send you guys an email and see how quickly we can move that. Okay, anything else? No, okay, I need an important motion. It's Costa, okay, a second.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor? I think, did anyone second it? I'm going with Joe, okay, great, all in favor, that passes eight zero. Thank you so much, thanks for sticking with us, good night.